North Plains City Council meeting, no word at 7:00 PM. Please allow, she's down with me. Pleasure to be here today, the United States of America. And it spans one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can I have a local?
Thank you, Counselor Page.
Here.
Counselor Kendall?
Here.
Counselor Payton?
Here.
Bridget Swordson, who's with us tonight, to the Library Board. And Resolution Number 2235, reappointing, or 2236, excuse me, appointing Sherri Simmons, who's with us tonight, to the Parks and Rec Board. And Resolution Number 2240, which is basically reappointing Doug Newton, Doug Newton Kim, to the Parks Board. And those are the items from the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, and I shall look them all up. Version 2235, version 2236, and version 2240.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the North Plains, City of North Plains for June 20th, 2023. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none opposed, the motion is carried. Thank you. That was the time on our agenda when we have public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak tonight, making a public comment? Do we have anybody online who wants to make a public comment?
Hi, this is Lisa, Lisa Prybula. I just wanted to make a quick public comment. I, hopefully you can hear me okay.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure audio is okay. I, we, I am actually here on behalf of the Economic Development Committee. And we were, I'm here because we would like to request to be able to meet with the Urban Renewal Agency at some point. To give you a little bit of background, at our last EDC meeting, we had the new owners of the Rusty Piston come in and talk about some of the bishops and talk about some of the challenges that they are having location as they try to renovate an older property with an established building. They brought to us two concerns. One is the parking that is required given their zoning for their specific lot that is actually different zoning than for the other businesses on that older part of commercial. But they also brought another concern about some of the some of the costs and some of the challenges they are having renovating the building being the condition it was in and the age of it. So our request from the EDC is to be able to meet with the URA and even discuss some possibilities of a grant that we could possibly put together for some for businesses that are willing to bring new or basically new business to Commercial Street and ways that we could help support them and incentivize businesses to come to Commercial.
Okay, anything else, Lisa? I don't see why we can't make arrangements to get that on the future calendar. I'm not sure, will meet next, it probably won't be next month. It may not be till September, but I don't see why we can't arrange that.
All right, that'd be excellent. No, that is the only item that we wanted to bring to the council today.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. I have a card from Aaron Nichols. So if you want to come forward, I'll give you three minutes. And please state your date and your address for the record for us.
That working?
Yes.
Working, okay, thank you. My name is Aaron Nichols. I live at 11,000 Northwest Jackson Quarry Road and I farm next door to that. I'm speaking here tonight to ask you to table the urban growth boundary expansion and give the staff direction to do further outreach and report back on how to include more interested parties in this planning. Many here tonight urge you to table or reject the plan on the merits of the expansion, the lack of notice or legal deficiencies. I share many of these views and have previously stated these objections and testimony and other communication. But tonight I urge you to table the plan because with the engagement we're seeing now, I think we have a better plan. And because I think tabling is the most prudent course for North Plains and its tax dollars. Should the council pass the ordinance tonight, I and many others will be obligated to fight it at the county and the state and the courts. And if you plan to vote for the urban growth boundary expansion now, are you sure the county is going to support it? Are you sure they'll vote for a plan that has many organized constituents opposed to it? And where a large advocacy voluntary home builder appears to be one of the big winners? I mean, and look, you know, look at that consultant's plan. And the ag enforcement, is it likely to convince a judge that the soils were adequately considered when in a very similar case Hillsborough, despite its consultants and lawyers lost? These are some of the more salient objections, but you've heard more. And, you know, should we prevail in any of those arguments, then much or possibly all the work will need to be redone and likely with the same involvement you could do now. So, but that's not the path I think I want, and I don't think it's the path that's in your all's best interest either. I think that by tabling the ordinance now and working with those who currently oppose it, we can flip the coin. Rather than fighting over an expansion that at best does bear any meeting planning goals, we could collaborate on the plan. It's good for North Plains and surrounding areas and as a model for the state. While I think that collaboration would be hard and likely would result in a different plan, and it does open up real opportunities. We could look at rural reserves, the balance of urban growth boundary expansion. We could work with the county or metro advisors to make a regional plan. We consider what types of housing businesses systems want to see in town. A plan like this, with a lot of buy-in, a lot of partners, is more likely to be realized with the county and the state. More likely to survive pressure from developers or variances that is on North Plains, other, some other accounts for mixed-use communities, and likely to make a better plan. The best time for collaboration might have been in 2020 when the process started, but I think the second best time is now. I urge you to give yourself the time you need to make a stronger, better, and more practical group plan. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, so, there being none, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to our first staff report of the evening, which will be Library Board. It looks like Robin is with us online in his house. Oh, that's right, Carol, Carol is pimps getting for Robin tonight. She's on vacation. I won't forget about that. Go ahead, Carol.
Thank you. I know that you already got the full report from Robin for the month, but I wanted to just highlight a couple of items. The first is the Friends of the North Plains Public Library. We are so thankful and have much gratitude for the, for our outgoing board members. We chart Debbie Olson, Carolyn Levitt, Norma Tucker, for their dedicated service. And we also want to just note all the Friends members who came alongside them over the years. They have left a profound legacy in the North Plains community. And I noticed that one of the founders is here tonight, and I just want to say thank you to Sherri Simmons. Thank you. A lot of you might already know that the library was started in the closet here at Jesse Mays. And some forward-thinking community members really made it happen. But anyway, at the last meeting, we elected a new slate of officers that'll be effective July 1st. And that transition is going very smoothly, and the outlook for the Friends looks not only strong, but very robust. And then secondly, I just want to note that this is our summer meeting program. We had an amazing kickoff. And we already have 282 kids and teens signed up, which we're always happy when we get 300 at the very end of the summer, so we're really excited about that.
Good, thank you. Anybody have any questions for the library? We'll put Carol on the spot if we need to. No, I think there was a, the report was as usual. I think you did a great job. So, everything that I can see from Robin's pretty much spot on. And it looks like the council are actually increasing, so that's good. Thank you. Right, chief, excellent.
Well, good evening. Looks like in, in May, one place police officer responded to 331 calls for service or self-initiated those. We continue with our trends of the PD, public demand calls being a little bit low, which is a good thing. But we continue to be active with high self-initiated activity. Again, there were no, nothing major calls or any call that will reoccur. Looks like we had 50 hours of after-hours overtime for that month. And we stopped doing the after-hours overtime, June 7th. So that is, that has been canceled. There will be 13 hours in June. Just for that short amount of time. So, as you can see in the staff report, it looks like extra patrol was really where we spent the majority of that time. There was a few calls. Other than that, unless you have any questions?
I have one question. See a new trend happening with electric bikes? Do I rarely see it palling? No. But, using like scooters, but my concern is with the younger kids. Is there a trend that the Washington County is seeing on that now, or is it going to be a problem in the future? Or is that something that the Washington County is looking at?
I don't have a specific answer to that. All you can go with is what I've seen in absolute electric bikes of all types are very popular now. And there's specific laws that go with that, and there's for the electric bikes or the scooters. So to answer your question, there's already laws in place for it. And again, I can see that the trend's going up, and there's more and more of them.
Okay. One question?
Go ahead.
At some time, do you, the, we just have like kids bike helmets and stuff in case the kids run around and it's sort of they can, if they don't have a helmet, they can maybe give them one? Do we have, yeah, we have a spare amount of helmets at City Hall? I mean, maybe this one isn't that hard.
Though there were a couple of years ago, I believe they got handed out or given. I don't, I can double check, but I don't believe we have.
We try to make sure there's, oh, say that's part of our program with the nights. So if there isn't helmets, there should be helmets.
Okay.
If somebody can give back to me, I can give back to make sure that whatever is needed, we get that fulfilled.
Yeah, sounds good.
Maybe, maybe, that's something that's done on National Night Out too.
Correct. And that could be coming up. It's not in here, but, you know, obviously the summer, all the summer events are kicking up. We've got the Fourth of July Garlic Festival. I was just talking to the mayor via email. We should have our National Night Out on August 3rd. August 1st is the typical, and like we normally like to do is do it a couple of days later, so that we can have our National Night Out in the state, if they're there at Jesse Mays. So it should be August 3rd, it should be on the city calendar, thanks to Lori. It should be 6 to 8.
One more, because if they, if they, if they may?
Yeah. Go ahead, Counselor Page.
For the Fourth of July, there's going to be some holiday scheduling and probably some after-hours scheduling. Are we looking at that now for making sure we have staff to the fire area, make sure that fireworks are based up on the air? And if you are to at least have a police presence to make them not so willing to do it?
Yes, we can look at that. At this point, I hadn't, using the usual staffing that we normally use. I'm not familiar at this point with any special. I haven't heard of any like additional things, maybe I've missed it. I live in the normal Fourth of July stuff.
Usually at evening times, people like to have fun and have a block parties. And, you know, they're supposed to smash off bottle rockets or large fireworks. They're fun. And people tend to like look around and they have one shooting up. If there's actually police presence, they tend not to do that, or not as much, you know?
I can definitely look into that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Chief? Go ahead, Teresa.
Can you share what proactive measures were taken along West Union Road? Specifically, I know we've talked a lot about speed and just more recently, another mailbox being hit near the Vian doma property. And, you know, I travel that road quite frequently and, and live off of that road, and I do see a lot speed that seems more in excess of 45 miles an hour. And more so, I don't see any presence. You know, I saw one maybe at 5:00 in the morning one day on my way to work, which tells me it's likely it was an overtime officer or maybe someone just on the west end, but I don't see any of that where it's proper place. I'm just curious what proactive measures were taken, knowing that that is becoming a high incident part of town.
I know we're, we're the city manager, we're still waiting on the speed signs to come up, and then we'll, we'll be putting some speed signs on there. Other than that, you haven't seen it, but we continue to work and drive up and down the road as well as run some radar there. All right, that's, that's really about it at this point.
Okay, and so looking at these numbers for May, something along vacation is or traffic stop, something would be attributed to some radar that you're running on West Union? If that was in, if I'm understanding correctly?
Honestly, without, I don't know how many stops have been done on West Union, so I, that information I don't have in front of me at the time. That is something we can, we can focus more effort on.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any additional questions for the chief? I think you're absolutely there. But it sounds like you got it the same, so at least going forward, maybe you know, there's always going to be opportunity to probably preventative. And I'm, I don't know how often the trailer's been out there, but I certainly think that if our trailer makes sense out there, at least maybe, maybe once a month. I don't know how often we can deploy that. But my thought would be the more often, probably the more, we're going to get more compliance that way. It's just, it's, it's a better way to do it for the most part, at least in my mind, so maybe we can look at that too. Yes, sir. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay, Public Works, Dustin is present. Good to see you, Dustin.
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me okay? My report was sent to you. I'll kind of glance over it. This will be my first report I'm actually giving to all. So, bear with me, please. As far as the projects that's been going on recently, the Jesse Mays Community Park was completed. We had a grand opening. We also had the dedication of Per Means Court, and that was a pretty big success. We had a lot of people turn out for that. Some other things going on, the Public Works Facility that is coming, we're doing a lot of coordination still for groundbreaking this summer. The grade improvement was signed earlier, earlier this month. So that should be coming out pretty soon with the Public Works Facility. The 313th side of improvement project is on a delay right now because of Clean Water Services. We're waiting on them, on some, some final touches. The big event that's happened in the past couple of weeks was the Washington County project over here at Glencoe on North. And I know we received a lot of residents calling in with their concerns about the, that project and the coordination with that. And I know that was something that was permitted by the county and also the developer. And we're working on alleviating some issues that stem from that project going on forward with construction on North Avenue here in the future. So hopefully some of these concerns that we had with noise and traffic are going to be alleviated pretty soon. But the good news is the bulk of the construction on that intersection is done, and all they have to do now is more of the striking, you know, final touches. So most of those should be alleviated by, by this point. Upcoming events, we have the Elephant Garlic Festival that's coming up, and so we're kind of in transition to prepare for that. And just kind of get the Jesse Mays facility ready for all that. And that's part of our daily scheduled routine duties. That's just kind of the same thing that we've been doing, just preparing for the, the festivals, everything that are coming up the rest of the year. The other news, as far as vehicles and equipment, our backer truck is still down. But we have purchased a new mini excavator, which will be able to help us in the, in the event that we do have another water leak that we can at least be able to excavate in that time. And we've already used that piece of equipment to help remove vegetation and blackberry bushes around the area as well. So it's given quite, quite a bit of use since we purchased this, purchased it. As far as that, that's about all that has gone in the last month. And any questions?
Question? Yes, thank you. Yes, I, is that back truck, is that from that break-in or is that covered by insurance? The, the status on that, or what is the status?
As far as the break-in, it's, this, it's a different issue. There was, yes, it was a different issue where the transmission wasn't working correctly. So we had that fixed, and as far as, the last I heard is it wasn't up and running yet. But even if we do not have that vehicle up and running, we have a mini excavator. And we also have our partners with the City of Cornelius and also with TBWD that they have crews that can help us in that that we need to do some heavy excavation.
Wonderful, thank you. Any additional questions for Dustin?
I have one.
Counselor, where are they?
Sidewalks. We have a lot of newer sidewalks in the city. That's good. Some are a little bit older, so sidewalks may be raised in front of the trees, obviously the, the, the weird trees that open up. Do we have a plan, new idea now, but in the future, maybe we can to walk the sidewalks and see this, the sidewalk need to be repaired or leveled off? I know by the church over here, there's a blacktop that's pretty rough shape. It's a blacktop sidewalk, so it's, you know, softer, so I'm sure that that's going to be, it's going to be fixed. But do you have plans to audit those?
Right now, I know we have some sidewalk projects that are in the works, which include some other reconstructions around town. But some of these issues might be fixed with these major projects that are coming on within the next couple of years. As far as an audit of existing sidewalks, typically sidewalks are the resident responsibility according to our code. And if there is an issue that is, you know, something that is immediate that we can address, we, we could potentially address some of these major issues. But some of these issues we can also address with future upcoming projects, just with the life cycle of the roads and the sidewalks themselves.
Yeah, the reason I asked that, because the sidewalks are part of the homeowner's responsibility. But also, but I don't see the form of the traction in comments. That means the sidewalk is pretty house, that is your responsibility. But it's not in my yard, it's in front of it, so people don't really want this question to it. So I was wondering if this was going to pull back the audit goes around. So you, so you can tell the homeowner, hey, your sidewalk is lifting, can you fix it? And then we can give them some kind of plan for it and, you know, before it becomes a huge expense like this that they try to allow. So I'm looking at some forecasts on that.
Okay, so more of like a city codes enforcement, maybe?
Ah, yes.
Okay, right now, if we have some time that, not during the busy season, that's something that we could go and do an audit internally. But at the moment, we do not have the manpower to be able to do an, an audit at that, at that level this time.
All right, I was looking for someone to be on a regular or semi-regular, maybe for two years audit, so we can catch these things before the commission.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Dustin? If not, I have a comment and a question, the first one to comment. And that's in regards, I would encourage you to, you know, basically learn all you can learn about the partnership with the NPDA for the Garlic Fest and what those expectations are, because they haven't always been met in the way that maybe, maybe they should be. And I want to make sure that there's a good line of communication and that whatever we see, we can address, because it truly is a city event and it, but it is a function that's put on by an organization. So it's for the benefit of the city, and it's, I know you're getting your feet wet, you're drinking from a fire hose. And, you know, you're going to learn along the way, because that's, that's the only way, you know, you just don't have a history. And we have a lot of folks who have, you know, a lot of knowledge. But I think I would encourage you to, to delve in that, to have ears, to listen. And I would encourage you to reach out and communicate. That's the comment. The question I have is kind of related to Counselor Kendall's question in regards to the back truck. And one of my thoughts, I believe I might have seen this on a prior report that I didn't ask, but I, I don't recall, and that is, is there any potential that this was related to the theft of the vehicle? And that's part of the question, because you can do a supplemental if we're looking at the cost to get it done. The other thing I question is why it's at Hillsborough Diesel, because Pacific Power Group in Ridgefield is traditionally the people that, that actually are the experts in those transmissions. So I kind of question whether or not they either have the certifications or the wherewithal to do what needs to be done. But I don't know the nature of why it's down. I'm just kind of curious is, one, could it be related to this theft, which happened not super long before you come aboard? But it does get used on a daily basis, I'm certain. So that might be hard to determine, but I'm certain that the people that know those products should be able to give you some idea.
To answer your question, it's plausible. I'm not a mechanic to know how those, how those issues were related, and I don't know the full extent of what happened when the vehicle was, the piece of equipment was stolen in the first place. That could be something for an insurance audit that they could come up with, whether it's related or not. As far as the location of where it was taken, that was, since I am new to the area, I gave that responsibility to the operations supervisor who took it in to be able to, to get it fixed working. But he knew where it would get fixed.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm not sure that it's the best place. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying anything derogative about that. It's just I'm not sure they have the expertise. And if, and if there's a significant amount of delay, I would question why they're not, that should be something that they can fix in, in a matter of days, depending on the schedule, of course, and some of those things that might be in front of it. But a lot of times when you have a vehicle that's in a city, that's either a frontline emergency service or a more critical service, they'll push a lot of those vehicles to the head of the line and make some of the other operators wait to get it done. And it sounds like we have things that we can count on in the backup, but I'm just curious, really more so if this is related to cost from the theft of the vehicle and possible damage that resulted in. You know, that might be, that might be hard to pin down, but that's kind of what I was asking.
This is definitely worth further investigation. This is definitely worth further investigation.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, uh do we have or will we have, or I guess we should have a report from uh. From the uh community development, I know Steve isn't with us tonight. Is that, is that anything, do you, is there anything you want to give us that's not in that written report?
No, um councillor Sheldon, I think the only thing I know would be that the the spec warehouse was approved last week on the far west sites. Um, the planning commission had that public hearing and uh issued a notice of decision um for that, so that the project will be moving forward. And other than that, everything else is uh kind of, it looks like one of the good ones to get over to town, coming to Grand Open pretty soon. Yeah, I didn't know I told officially until I read this, but it sounds like it's gonna be after weekend.
Okay, is there any questions that Andy might be able to address in the uh community development report? Okay, hearing done, we're gonna move on to finance uh department note we report. And essentially, from what I can read, we have one item on that, and that is the uh related to A A, which is the uh. The uh second reading and adoption of the housing needs analysis, uh ordinance four eight nine, is that correct?
Um councillor Sheldon, um.
Did I miss something?
I, as far as we, as far as anything you got in your agenda packet, no, that is it. But I wanted to update you on though is that um I do still have a monthly uh finance staff report pending. And the plan is to have it out to you all tomorrow. Um, I've been converting all of the monthly budget status information over to full two-year biannual numbers rather than just one year. Um, because looking at the eleven, or excuse me, the twenty-third or twenty-four months of the curve of this first biennium uh for the city. It's gotten extremely complicated, breaking it down by one fiscal year. So I'm transitioning the reporting over to for for through a full two-year biennium. And so that the report that you'll get tomorrow has all that information um reported that way. But as far as just kind of qualitatively this evening, um so far, all of the operating funds continue to operate um through May thirty-first. Um, at or below budget. Um, you passed this, you all passed a supplemental budget last month, and that did um increase uh budget in a couple of departments. But overall, um we're we're looking at landing at or below um of operating funds regarding uh biennial budget. Um, the only kind of notable thing I would say, and you'll see it in the tail of the report tomorrow, is we did have an increase in aging overdue water accounts. Um, through May thirty-first, and um we have some institutional customers that buy a ton of water from us. And they're um overdue uh thirty sixty days, and it's a few thousand dollars. Uh, I don't know the story, um we'll pursue it and see if there's just some sort of um payment schedule issue. Um, I haven't seen anything like that before, but that kind of explains a lot of it, but that's kind of the only anomaly in terms of um that and that. Regular monthly monthly reporting, but you'll see those numbers in detail tomorrow. Other than that, nothing terribly unusual. Um, by end of May thirty-first, besides the kind of the weird um spike in water account overdue overdue accounts.
Okay, we'll look forward to that. Uh. Does any of the council have any comments or questions, I should say, or Mr. Reed? All right. Thank you, Bill, appreciate that, and we we will look forward to that report. Uh, I know we're bearing down on uh, you know, basically June thirty, which is the fiscal year, and then the budget's gonna start on July one, so. You know, it's great to see that in a lot of cases we're carrying things over, so I think that's beneficial and obviously the target of the expenditure control budget. So I think that part works. Uh, with that, um we're gonna go right now into A A, which is uh ordinances. And the first ordinance is ordinance uh number four eight nine, which is the updating of the housing needs analysis with exhibits A and B. And uh, uh is there, is there, do either one of you want to speak to this, probably Bill perhaps? Is there anything really to speak to? Because I think otherwise we'll go ahead and uh I'll ask for a motion for the second reading and adoption of ordinance four eight nine.
Uh councillor Sheldon, just confirm, is nothing from the staff's perspective to add on this topic?
Okay, so council, uh I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and adoption of ordinance, ordinance four eight nine. Which is uh updating the housing needs analysis.
Point of order, this is maybe done by ten, only if it just the same motion.
Uh, this will be a separate motion.
I move to do the second reading of ordinance forty-nine by Talon.
It's moved and seconded to. Uh, read the second uh or the second reading of ordinance uh four eight nine and approving it. And ordinance, if I can get it to pull up here. Stan wants to jump around for some reason. Thanks. Okay, ordinance four eight nine is. Yes.
Could you have take a vote during the second reading?
Oh, yeah, so we do have to have a vote. Is there any discussion, ordinance four eight nine? Hearing done, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none opposed, the motion is carried. Ordinance four eight nine is an ordinance, the city council, the city of North Plains, Oregon, adopting updated housing needs analysis. Okay, we'll move on to. Ordinance number four nine zero.
Council.
Yeah, um you need to do the adoption now, right? I move to adopt ordinance four nine. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt uh ordinance uh four eight nine. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none opposed, motion is carried. Thank you, very good, Lori.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's not, it's not moving around like it should. Okay, now we're gonna go ahead and move to ordinance four nine zero, which is the the urban growth boundary expansion and text amendment. And uh probably before I uh ask for the the motion. I am just gonna say that uh we undertook a very coordinated and uh what I consider to be a deliberate. Approach to what we need to essentially look at the needs of the city going forward. And and I know that at the first hearing, uh and tonight wasn't a public hearing, but at the first hearing, there's certainly some folks that disagree with that. And well, you know, there's some some sympathies. Uh, we have to look forward uh for us as a city. And we we did this process uh in line with all of the standards that are required. And I think uh since twenty twenty, um there's been a lot of conjecture and a lot of comments made in the public that aren't necessarily reflective of the process that we actually did go through. And uh, you know, I want to just ensure people that if there are continued complaints that you can go for. And lodge those complaints with accounting. This is per the state rule, and um we've been very deliberate in following those rules. So we feel good about our process, we think it's been transparent. And uh so we're in the point of basically uh adopting this. So with that, uh I'll entertain a motion to uh read the second reading of ordinance four nine zero.
I move to do the second reading of ordinance number four nine zero by Talon.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading, or the second reading, excuse me, of or ordinance four nine zero. Uh, is there any discussion?
All right, to echo um. Um Sheldon's um words. These things affect a lot of people and uh. We have to uh, our our job is to um. Perform this CGB expansion and there are some complaints about that, it doesn't do farmland. But there's not much else to go into, we can't build the skyscape of land, um this, we are we are surrounded by by farmland. We do have um. Uh agricultural reserves under the set of our twenty-sixth, has not been built upon for fifteen years, that's part of the great, I mean, that's what. Uh, part of great compromise is made to make sure we have farmland for that. This farmland was earmarked many years ago for a real place to expand on. Um, there's been a lot of process for this, um. And I know that is a subject, but it's kind of the roles we have to do. As long as we have.
Any additional discussion? Okay, having a motion and a second, been through discussion. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none opposed, uh motion is carried. Ordinance four nine zero is an ordinance of the city council of the city of North Plains, Oregon, amending the urban growth boundary and approving associated comprehensive land text amendments. Now, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of ordinance four nine zero.
I move to adopt ordinance four nine zero. I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance four nine zero. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none opposed, the motion is carried. Okay, we're gonna move on to nine A, which is resolution number two two three eight, approving a PSA. With Corinne Weiss's strategic communications. There is information in the packet. Uh, I think what I want to do is ask uh Andy to speak to this. Because I have some concerns and questions that I know that I I want to ask, and we'll see if anyone else uh has those questions. So go ahead.
Sure, sure councillor Sheldon, this is the. And the city council put a priority on increasing uh. Community engagement and community participation, uh community involvement and a goal setting session last year. So we've outlined some strategies in here in a communications plan um for the city to achieve. And we made this a two-year uh two-year contract to line up with our two-year budget cycle. So this would be building on the work that we've done uh these last couple of years, after we had a strategic um. Uh, I guess communications uh plan done for us, and that led to a lot of changes, like a city app, um improve the city website, improve its store newsletter. And things of that sort, and now we're kind of building on that in the next phase to include um some of the additions that we've seen here. Uh, one of the first things to do would be to have a new um kind of communication strategy kickoff, talking to different stakeholders and the council. Um, we're planning on maybe having a work session in July, if not August, um to get council feedback on that. And then building in on um kind of tapping into the ways that people communicate, it's very obvious that people communicate all sorts of different manners. Um, even in people's own households, how they communicate and receive information uh can be tricky, so we're really trying to uh hone in on that. And then there's a list of other um topics and kind of priorities and implementation uh pieces in here. Um, so what we did was a request for qualifications from some firms back in the spring, and we had uh several uh. Several uh responses to that, so we took uh three. Firms to give us a more detailed scope of work to to kind of hit on those priorities and some of the criteria included, you know, uh obviously. previous communications experience, writing skills, um working with governments, familiar with Washington County, familiar with the North Plains. Um, just having government um uh communications experience and then um, you know, uh experience using the different. Whether that's uh social media, whether it's website development, and all of those things um that went into the cra- cra- criteria scoring. Um, so we had those detailed scopes of work in early, uh let's see, late May. We scored those and ultimately Corinne Wise Strategic Communications received the top score. And it's kind of in a nutshell, Corinne's been working with this the last couple of years. Um, she's really made a lot of strides in what we uh do here, and we have a lot of um ideas on improving what's already been done. Especially starting with a more targeted strategic approach. So with that, I have to take your questions, councillor Sheldon, or any others.
Is there any council questions?
I do agree we need to have better communication. Uh, we have a lot of little parts, for example, the CGB expansion, it's been at work for three years. And we do sound notices and all the little parts are met, but still. Um, there's a lot of loose ends that are all out there, they're needed to put together, so people know exactly what we're talking about. We do represent the government, where the general public is represented by the people on this uh forum right here. But. Do we need to consider this to tonight, this became postponed for a couple of months, we have to work that one with the city council, maybe get figure out the definite way to have them, because. Same things mentioned here on the podcast. Um, I'm not sure.
I wouldn't consider that a top priority, is the two-year plan.
Yeah, yeah, well, no, she listened, that's one of the things that she worked on on the podcast, like, huh, interesting. So maybe we could figure out more of what we need for the contracts, maybe to do those things. I guess we're stuck about it.
Yes, that is. Possible, but a little bit tricky because um she creates a lot of the content that we do right now. So not having, we do not have the internal bandwidth to do all the Facebook posts, responding to votes, doing the website content creation, doing the newsletter. Uh, doing it, you know, writing stories, um it's, it's a fairly big job. So. What's that?
How is she doing now?
She's under contract with the city. Yeah, she had a one-year contract right now. And then in the end of this one. So uh some of the things you're talking about, um this scope can be fluid. I mean, it's really, it stems from what the council's priorities are for for communicating. So that's the point of having a a work session, that getting in a contract with whoever it would be. Uh, to really find out, you know, what our leaders want, especially because. The top goal of the council was to try to improve community involvement, get more folks involved. Whether that's volunteering, showing up to meetings, showing up to events, and also increasing engagement. So yeah, it's a tough job.
Well, well, I would see as something to uh link all of our um committees together, right? Sometimes you have one hand not knowing what the other hand is doing, and something to make it cohesive. Um, maybe put the agendas for what we're doing, the month of the past, the Tuesday past. So that's, that's more, what I was looking at, besides having a uh PR for. So that's. Maybe we need a work session to figure out exactly what we want. Maybe we need to work such that we want.
Well, for agendas, that, that can be tricky, but at least the topics that was the point of the, uh. You know, doing the, the city council business calendar and seeing and then putting in my stack for what the committee commission is talking about. As, as long as we know it's coming ahead.
Well, I'm talking about for the, uh, two we need to know. To, oh, this is.
Sure, yeah, yeah, we.
Because that's the look from the U G B, uh, expansion. A lot of people felt they weren't aware of it. And, you know, that's what we need to, we thought we were requirements, but we do more. Well, that's kind of what I, in my vision, uh, the communication manager would do, not manage, uh. You know, Facebook posts, but manage, get all the information out there.
Yeah, um. So I, I, I hear you. I hear what you're saying there. We, we had this discussion last week. So she did put together only. The, uh, communications efforts we've done over the last few years. I have to get. Happy to share that, um, but just right off the top. Eleven Facebook posts, um, this year, uh, June, we had June E News content headline, um. The. Okay, so those are all the posts. In twenty twenty-two, we had. Same in the connected trend, E's newsletter. A Q's in June, city management message in February, back in October, U G B update, September, E O A, public hearing. Budget perspectives. We, we've tried to do kind of storytelling to let people know what an urban growth boundary is, why we're doing it, why it matters for the ci- the city's. Fiscal health and budgets. Um, so it wasn't just. Here's a U G B meeting. It's kind of trying to do some storytelling about what it is and what the process is. Um, so I'll, I'll share this, um, I'll share this, a two pager of all the communications we've, we've done about this particular project. And that's just from twenty-one to twenty-three. Since she's been on board with this. We, this started before that, uh, before we had someone helping us work with this. So, um, I'll share that with counselors, um. Uh, after this meeting, but I, I understand what you're saying completely. These are, these are big, big issues, um. I will say.
No, but what I'm really saying is, uh, I'm asking that question as she's done, uh, updates to Facebook pages and. But for a communication manager, we. Figure out other ways to communicate, to, to, uh, to expand our existing. Uh, process and try to figure out a way to, uh, have this more of a public life. I mean, it, it. True, we have a representative government and. Uh, people on this table and our various committees we have are working hard on this. Uh, so everybody doesn't have to, right? But just to give people an insight, yeah, I have that one. What's, what's going on in none of the meetings? That's kind of why it was meant by, yeah, communication manager.
No, I, I don't disagree. Like I said, one of the first tasks is, um. Really drilling down to how people get their, get their information. How they communicate. I mean, I, I don't, I'd be interested to know the percentage of Oregonians that know that. Legislature have kind of walked out and doing things. It's probably a lot smaller than we think. And so finding ways to communicate effectively is, it's a big task, but that's. That's definitely what we're going to try to achieve with this, uh, going forward. That will take input from the city council. Um, I think a lot can be done in community events, you know, doing some tabling, um, things like that. Involving the, you know, involving the city council and other committees too. Uh, it's all, uh. A, a team effort, but I, I, I understand your comments, uh, council page every review. That's the, that's what we. That's priority number one is just figuring out more effective ways to communicate with folks and find out how we do get information.
Any additional questions? Or my questions?
I've had a couple.
Go ahead.
Uh, just to piggyback on to counselor Phage's comment, I think. Some of this information residents have to seek out, right? And how is it going to be making for residents and. Part of that is on us, but part of it also is on, on residents. Um, but thinking about the contract and how much money it is. It's a hard number for me to swallow, thinking about our current. Level of sort of authority. And I think just the clearer scope of, of her contract would be helpful, uh, because I see the, the Facebook posts. And it's very one-sided. It's very much like, oh, check the box and put up a post about tonight, city council meeting, but there's a link you have to click on and then. You know, it.
Yeah, we, we talked about that just even today, you know, if it's. I think a lot of this is government, government communications one-on-one, you know, but certain, some of these things, that meaning. You know, sometimes if you're posting on social media, you don't want to use that as a remedy platform because that can have a lot of risks and liability there. But we just talked today about, all right, you know, pulling out, not every item on the agenda, but you know, certain items that. Uh, maybe people would be more interested in, you know, whatever posts to the top, highlighting those, um, in there in Facebook posts. Um, is just one small example.
Yeah, and I, and, and to piggyback on to that, I think not so, it's sometimes it feels very one-sided of like, yes, we checked their box, we posted this. And residents will comment on the city Facebook post. And there's radio silence. And that's what we're paying Corinne for. And I know it's a, it's a delicate line because you don't want to engage in, you know, further a disagreement, but also how to redirect and have just. Radio silence on our end when we have a communications manager.
Yes, um, again, now we have a social media policy that, that kind of goes into detail on some of these, something that she made, um. And it's a, it's a fine line between responding to one and then responding to three hundred. How, how are we going to ever be more that's awful? Sometimes it's just a. Uh, a judgment call and I apologize, counselors sometimes feel like they have to be the ones that jump in there. Um, but she will fly for me certain, when things go, when things definitely need responding to, information is getting too wild, you know, so. We just need the, and we need to set the right, right? We'll do that. Uh, but oftentimes if it's. Sometimes there's radio silence. It could be because there's, you know, a lot of the normal folks that kind of. On Facebook a lot or social media a lot and they just. Spend a bit too much time on there frankly, uh, but I, you know, I. I'll leave it to a communications professional. I have experience with this and what they kind of want to dig into a lot of times on social medias, but. That's something we can reassess, you know, looking at what that fine line is. Do we move it over five yards and maybe one or two. Extra comments, that's worth exploring.
Totally, and I, and I hear you and, and I know this. You have, you have enough on your plate. This would be one more thing that you have to deal with and I. I'm in support of having a communications manager. I just want to make sure that we're being. Crystal clear on that expectation and I feel like we're halfway there. We're just, how do we get over that, that next part? Um, the podcast doesn't really seem like that might resonate, but I don't know. Um, but also with the app, you know, we have the app and. There's so much potential with the app and I think just we can pass that feedback along to Corinne. Um, how do we make it easy? I know counselor Sheldon, a few months ago had mentioned infographics, just really quick, easy things. And I saw that listed here in the agenda, but. Um, that would be my feedback, just knowing that this is, this is a chunk of money that, um, I really want to make sure we're getting the value for and not just checking it off.
Yeah, I. I appreciate that and I probably shouldn't blend with Facebook because that's not all she does. Um, when she came in, the website is completely different. Much better now, actually. We're going to use some purple, purple money and we can get even better, but. We have style guides. We have new city logos, um, we, uh. We have a communications toolkit that she put together for all, uh, employees, just kind of. Trying to improve things and make them more cohesive for all employees, again, writing policies, social media policies, sometimes employees would. Go off on their own and go a little rogue and respond to things in the past. That doesn't happen anymore. But it sounds like we could, we could do more, but we want to make sure we provide people with that. Uh, doing that. So there's a lot that goes into, um. A lot that goes into public communication and this is good feedback. This is what, these are the things that a communication specialist needs to hear, you know, because. Their job is to communicate what you're hearing from this instrument. So, um. I think that's all, all of our reason.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yes, I have one.
What counselor Smith?
So this last one was just a one-year contract and we're looking at a two-year contract. Is there a way just to get an extension and we have a work session on exactly what we really want? Have input. It sounds like there's a lot of input here we need to do.
That, that's possible. Yeah, that's possible. Um, my. Yeah, my only hesitation was if we delay this, we have no one, it's going to go really dark. If you think we're not doing enough now.
Right. I'm just saying, I need an extension for six months or three months and have a, a work session. And then we can all discuss what we're looking at. As you know, we could always do better, but we, we have done a lot better than we have in the past. But we can always do better. Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of feedback, I think, the city council wanted to give. Before we, I don't know what to do next year. I think it's, I think it's more diligent than we've done. Um, and some of the diligence is just then would. Maybe with her extra opinion, she can explain to us what's worked and what hasn't worked. And we can know that at least. We, right now, I don't, I'm not thinking we're doing a very good job. Um, putting all the committees and all the meetings and all the working parts we have together and nice high-level presentation. It's out there. People can research it. Uh, this is easier. So that's, that's kind of what I want to address.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Or questions? I have questions, uh. My first question was about cost. My second question is about form. Uh, the first question really being, you know, it seems like. The amount, which I know we approved in the budget is there, right? But I'm not so sure, at least in my first pass, I had a lot of reservations about why are we going to pay somebody sixty-three thousand a year for. Thirty hours a month. What, what are we getting? And I'm not sure I could really see. I know what some of our goals are and we do have goals. We definitely wanted to improve communications, but my concern was. Okay, what, what are we getting in substance? And the other thought that came to my mind is. How do we get the K P I's on where we're at? And in my mind, I'd like to see a report. You know, every three months about what we've undertaken, you know, some of those things are going to be visible. But I'm not sure all of those things are going to be visible to us. And I don't think this is shooting down what we need to do. I've. I, I'm probably supportive if I can see that there's a substantiation. So I kind of share some of the same, same concerns about. The cost and where we're going with it and where the values at. And that's only based upon, okay, we built on that and I know, you know, we're kind of trudging towards. The end of the budget year and, you know, my thought is if she can hang with us, we can go. We, we can, we can put this off for a bit. I, I don't see where we absolutely have to do it. I understand the point about it being dark, but. Why don't we go by the hour? If we're going to essentially. Go for an independent contract. Then we should be able to buy some hours and not run out and get, get the, the consensus and the concerns about. What directions we need to go with our communications. And I, and, and I don't think anybody here is saying anything that's about the minutia, right? Nobody wants to direct it, but we all probably have some ideas on what. What we think we need to see, maybe first and second and third and so on. But, uh, you know, that's, that's, that was my, my very initial thought was, wow, why are we throwing this at it? We know we need some. I didn't have any reference because I didn't take the time to go back and look and see where we were at in this last year's contract. How much did we spend in the last year's contract? Do you recall?
Uh, the, that one was fifty-five.
Okay, and then how many hours? Roughly the same amount of hours? Okay, so.
This includes another project, website and all.
Yeah, so, you know, there's some other pieces here and maybe I'm not seeing it all, but, uh. You know, my thought was, you know, we should probably put the brakes on it and have a discussion. And I know that might not sit well with you, but. If there's consensus here, I'm, I'm happy to consider that.
Let me, let me interview, um, I'll just challenge her this week. We can do an extension and then she can come and talk with the council. Try to get her in July, maybe more like.
Executive session, you have an extension. It would be nice.
What's that?
Executive session would be nice.
Do you want to do an executive session or a work session?
I would think a work session would be fine. What would be the point of an executive session?
I meant to say work.
Okay, okay, I was like, I wanted to come up with a. Okay, I, we can do that. At least she can have that action because she came in. She did, um, a year review and K P I's and all that stuff and I, I failed to have her come back the second time around. So I, I apologize there, but I, I think she'll be. Completely available for that.
Well, and I, you know, and I get that, but I think. You know. We need to know the values there. And if we do, I think that it's a little easier, even though we have budgeted that. To, you know, take the next step, so.
Okay, I, I, I have my direction. Okay, my direction.
The other question I had, uh, was about form and, and that was, I, I know that the form has been approved by the city attorney. But I have some concerns over the time and place of controlling somebody under IRS rules. And you, you know, that's a, that, that's been, that's been cinched up quite a bit. So. You know. I know we don't want to go hire somebody, but I think we better make sure that we're ironclad. And that we're not controlling her. We're giving her assignments and she can do those assignments. You know, in a certain timeframe. So we gotta have progressive type work that not fall under the auspices of. A true employee where we're controlling.
Right.
That was my other concern.
Okay, alright, I understand.
Well, we're not controlling breaks on, um, you know, a whole lot of stuff. We're just. We're just controlling what we want.
Yeah, and I understand that, James, but there's, there's, there's been a, a fair cinch in, in the rules around that. And I, I've also read some. Opinions, some legal opinions on it. And it just concerns me a little bit. So if we're going to protect ourselves, I want to make sure that. The city attorney feels good about going before the IRS and defending our, our, our agreement.
This is the, a standard P S A form from them that they probably provided enough anywhere in twenty twenty-one, but I'll, I'll put it in form again and bring in some of those comments.
Okay.
Part of that, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, we're going to move on. The next item is. Is it eight C? Are we nine B? Are we nine B?
You're at nine B.
Nine B, so that, the subject of that is. A resolution two two three seven, which is to set the master fee schedule to update that and adopt it. Uh. Is there, is there anything you want to add to that? What's written in the report, Bill?
Counselor Sheldon, no, um, the report goes into painful detail of changes, um, but just to reiterate, most of the fees. Um, are just being adjusted by inflation. Um, the report really just details. Um, and these that have, um, changes that aren't simply inflation. So I think that's.
Okay, I think this is pretty straightforward. Is there any discussion about, uh, or questions for, I should say. Uh, about this resolution?
Question?
Counselor Kim?
And all these numbers that you have. And this, uh, masterpiece schedule, are those, are they all, everyone have been increased? I mean, all three percent or two percent or, tell me what you did or. What am I seeing? I don't see any changes, so.
Counselor, yeah, thank you for the word masterpiece, but, um. Okay, I would, I wouldn't put it on a schedule, but I appreciate that. Um, so, um, the only fees that. Aren't changed at all, actually, for fiscal year twenty-four will be base water. aren't changed at all, actually, for fiscal year twenty-four, will be base water rates um, for the water utility. So, um, everybody who buys water in the city of North Plains will pay the same base rates that they, uh, have been paying this year. That's the only fee that isn't, uh, adjusting. The vast majority of the fees that we charge, whether a developer comes in, applies for, you know, tries to get a land use permit or um, somebody comes in and wants to get a new bit or renew their business license or, you know, um, fees for the most part, most of them are going up uh, by a proposed four percent to reflect basic, just basic inflation, um, which is, which is slowing down, by the way. Uh, last year, uh, it was a five percent adjustment. This year it's only, um, proposed to be four. Um, but there are, uh, a few that are changing a bit substantively. Um, the, the SDCs are going to, are going to either go up by four percent, parks and water system or, uh, water SDCs are going to go up, provide a proposed four percent based on the methodology you all adopted last year. The methodology and the consultant, uh, took a look at our SDCs. Um, our transportation system development charge is going to go up by six point oh one percent and that's, um, per the methodology updated. Uh, that's what the county did, what the county board did for, uh, an increase in their transportation development tax. And so for our transportation SDC, that's the, that's the, that's what we follow. Um, transportation utility fee for what everybody pays in their monthly water bill is the same thing. It's, it's pegged to the county TBT and how the board reads that every year. Um, the business license fee for the first time, we're proposing adding a per employee fee of five dollars. Um, right now, the business license fee is by far the lowest in Washington County because nearly every city has moved to some kind of, um, plus, um, annual fee per employee. Um, most start, um, at two or three employees or the first two employees are free, including the owner, and then thereafter it's, um, five, seven in some places or more than that per month. And we're, we're proposing a five dollar once a year fee per employee after the second employee. So that's a little bit different. Um, and I'm sorry for, again, I don't mean to get into excruciating detail with all this. Um, we are we're, we're eliminating the, the land use application deposit system. Um, anytime anybody came in and did a type two or a type three land use application, they would give us a big deposit and then, you know, we would work against that with our consultants. We're ending the deposit. We always went through the, the full amount of the deposit. Uh, so we're just calling that a fee, keeping it, uh, rather than trying to, uh, the complicated accounting for the deposit that we use up anyway. Um, garden fees, the community garden fees, we're giving a slight discount to residents versus non-residents. And we're going to charge a little bit differently for a single size bed versus a double sized bed. So those fees are changing a bit. Um, the, the other kind of substantive change that, that the memo is extremely detailed in is, um, we are we're, we're proposing a new system where residents um, and nonprofits get very, pay different fees than non-residents for using just to base for running just to base. Um, right now, everybody pays, everybody but nonprofits pay two hundred dollars for the first two hours and then they pay thirty-five dollars per hour thereafter. And for residents, we're proposing backing that down for the first two hours from two hundred to a dot hundred and fifty. But every hour after the first two hours is seventy-five dollars for a resident. Non-residents will continue to pay two hundred dollars, um, for the first two hours. But every hour thereafter, non-residents will have to pay one hundred dollars for each, each additional hour. And then nonprofits, um, we're proposing that they pay fifty dollars for their first two hours. And then fifty dollars each additional hour thereafter if they use it for longer than two hours. Um, the other thing is that we're just across the board asking for a five hundred dollar refundable deposits for any rental that involves more than twenty-five people. So if you have alcohol or you don't, your deposit is the same, but it's five hundred rather than one hundred or two hundred or three hundred. So, um, those are kind of the main changes there.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay. No, I couldn't stop you. What you started.
Yeah.
So, thank you for the summation. Uh, is there any additional questions?
Are we going, are we going to be just every year?
Counselor Page, yeah, we'll, we'll come back to you. Every single year like normal, um, with changes. Um, you know, everything. Um, a lot of these things are moving forward, are going to be pegged towards some rate of inflation, but we'll come to you with that, like we have here and we have every previous year.
That question answered.
Yes.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, I'm going to entertain a res- uh, motion to approve resolution number two-two-three-seven to update the city of North Plains masterpiece schedule effective July one, twenty twenty-three.
I'm willing to adopt resolution twenty-two thirty-seven to update the North Plains masterpiece schedule.
Okay.
Been moved in second to adopt resolution number two-two-three-seven to update the city of North Plains masterpiece schedule effective July one, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, that's going to take us to the, uh, water rates, which is resolution number two-two-three-nine. And, uh, I'm, I know there was a great deal of information in the packet. We pretty much had went through that, uh, very recently. Um, is there anything you'd like to speak to on that? Andy or?
Yeah, counselor, so the only thing to note is it should not say increase in the agenda. So I apologize for that. That was something that we, I just caught on Friday, but uh, in the, the, uh, city attorney when the other resolution, we even tried to state increase to, to, in the back, that, uh, it's not staying flat this year. But a lot of those due to the cost of service study that H D R I done was, he's, he would be here to present a few numbers. He's done that big times and, um, uh, while Google doing the same thing tonight. Um, so, but we just want to be clear, the base rates would be remaining the same in, in that inflation in F Y twenty twenty-five, so that'll be in July of twenty next year. Um, and then there's just, um, uh, changes a little bit to the consumption rates. Or actually, what happens with the consumption rate is going down a little bit. Um, the residential rate will actually go down a little bit unless the user needs is more than average typical, typical month. And then we created, um, uh, an irrigation customer class as well. So a lot of this is kind of updating and, uh, modernizing the water system here, kind of in line with other, other, uh, jurisdictions. And we at least wanted to make sure that since we hadn't done a water rate study in a while, even if the rates aren't going to change any, we at least kind of want to level some of those, uh, those costs and cost of service. And with an expansion, uh, pending, we'll probably be going through this exercise within the next three years again, especially to look at industrial areas.
Yeah, I would anticipate that, knowing that we don't have enough comparisons. So maybe comparative study would be the right thing to do.
Correct. We need a broader set of businesses to, to really justify the next water rate, um, study, but we'll have that once we have some, uh, industrial areas and some, you know, different type of users.
Okay, thank you. So any questions regarding, uh, resolution number two-two-three-nine to update these water rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-four? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to move to adopt resolution number two-two-three-nine to update the city water rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
I'm moving to adopt resolution two-two-three-nine to update city water rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Stay. Okay, it's been moved in second to adopt resolution number two-two-three-nine to update the city of North Plains water rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, that's going to take us. Okay, navigation. Yeah, city manager, let's see, let's go. The last way down there, isn't it?
Yeah, sorry, long, long, long report there.
That's right. Okay, so city manager report. And with that, city manager.
Thank you, uh, Chair Sheldon. Um, nothing too much to elaborate on, um, uh, from this report. Uh, just to, I hope the mayor, you know, for one is enjoying her timeouts. We've done a lot these last couple of years, so we're on, she got towards to, uh, for getting some time away. Um, uh, Patty and a couple others from D P O were here and to your point earlier, Council Sheldon, we're going to have a meeting, uh, a couple of D P O folks next week to really start planning out all the, all the garment vests, um, preparations there, um, slow, that'll start picking up some time. Um, and other than that, I don't have a lot else to elaborate on. We kind of covered a lot of topics tonight. If you have any questions about, um, Friday's most recent report or any other, uh, ongoing, click, let me know.
Great. Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Warner? Well, I can say that I do appreciate the Friday vibe. Uh, to me, it's one of those things that just keeps us all on the know. So let's, don't ever stop that.
Well, to that end, I, I am going to take a P T O day on Friday. My folks are up from Midwest. So many, many bills can be addressed or I can send out on Thursday, but.
Well, that'd be, this, this doesn't have to be on a Friday. I'm not going to be around. Just, uh, citizen highlights. It's, it's good to know because oftentimes that's the first time I learn about something. I don't always get to participate in all the communication that happens around.
And the, the point of that is for you all to know things before, you know, before someone else knows you about it. But, um, one thing I actually remember, um, were there any takers for the HOPSCAM on July fifth, Councilman Smith? I did get your email.
Yeah, I just never responded, so I wasn't sure.
I was going to ask about that. I, I'd probably be good for two. Uh, and, you know, I can, whatever I need to pay.
No, we'll, we'll get a block of tickets from the city. I just, I, I don't want to get thirty if five people are showing up. I gotta be conscientious. Well, I actually had a meeting with the guy today since the mayor's not around. And Councilman Payton, was that a yes for you? Okay, so what I'll do is I'll get, uh, if we have a taker, I've said that, that do one plus one. So we'll get the first two tickets for both. Um, they wanted to know who would throw out first pitch.
I do.
Okay, I thought you might say that. Uh, um, yeah, he, he was looking for ideas. Uh, I know the mayor had done it.
That's right. Yeah, first pitch.
I'll know, I'll nominate Andy. Throw out the first pitch.
Well, you know what? The bad news there is my, my family's going to be out of town and so they won't even get to see me embarrass myself. I do it, so.
You couldn't do it worse than last year.
Oh.
Who did it last year?
She's on vacation, man. They've done the recording.
She's going to listen to this recording and hear who said that.
Well, she got a second chance at it.
We'll clip that part. We'll clip that part. All right, well, I'll leave it, I'll leave it up to the counselors to decide that she did ask that question today and I said I, I asked that. So, okay, um, it looks like we got two or six tickets from this table and so I can add those to the block.
Which ones again?
Probably seven P M. It's on July fifth.
I think, I think it's for the first. Four tickets.
I just had a, a quick question about that. If I remember correctly from last year, it was like one or two sections that were designated Northern Plains section. Is that the same process this year?
It is. He hasn't sent me the link yet. He'll, I'll probably get it tomorrow.
Okay.
We were sitting with the bank's group too, so.
Yeah, and, and I'm just trying to think if I want to purchase two additional tickets next to, you know. They didn't give, like, she didn't have sections. She said, no, we don't.
No, I, I, I've seen it. There's a, there's a little section.
Have they changed? Because I moved the website thinking, oh, they're going to have it blocked up. They didn't have it yet.
Okay, we will.
Check tomorrow.
We'll make sure to share that.
But, yeah.
We will share that. I think it'll be kind of a slower night there being the day after the holiday. So there probably won't be, there may not be a big rush on tickets, but I'll share that as soon as we get them.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, we said that last year was pretty old, but I don't think there have been any people from Van Seeder, so.
Okay. Are we done with the city manager report? Okay, now we're going to move on to council reports. Is there any council reports?
I have two.
With Council Page?
I tend to, yeah. I mean, traditionally, and, um, they did all the instructions back. And then I kind of heated afterwards. Um, there was a lot of talk about, um, the city, um, going about enforcing orders about car repairs and seeing if churches were actually being churches. And, um, and it took a lot of flack for that. And, um, thank you, Andy, for, uh, standing there and taking it. But I do want to commend the city in doing this hard thing. It's not easy to talk to somebody about such a cars in front of the house. Um, it's not easy to inquire whether a church is still active and being a church. So, um, especially when the people in the city will, will, will complain about over, overstepping. I just wanted to say that thank you. I think it's proper that we do uh, audit, you know, make sure our, uh, forces are being, are being followed. And even though it hasn't been in the past for a very long time, starting is sometimes a hard process and, um, thanks for doing it. It's, uh, you're going to get a lot of grief and, but you're doing the right thing. Thanks. Secondly, um, today I went to the North Plains, uh, library and had a meeting with some boy scouts. Uh, this part of the rank, you're going to have to talk to an elected official. And, um, so they asked to talk to me in a conference. Um, the North Plains library is a great spot to put that, or the meeting night. I was able to call them up and say, hey, can you guys tie a table or someplace for us to talk? And, and they were really good about it. So anyways, thanks.
I'll, I'll be here just curious because we haven't had a group of boy scouts around for a while.
It was supposed to be several, but it turned out to be one and his, and his dad.
Oh.
So there's two, but, uh, it's a first-class rank for that. And also there's some stuff on air badges as well. But for the first-class rank, they haven't talked about elected official about, you know, constitutional rights and stuff like that. So I picked the, uh, the library for that and, um, some of the kids didn't, didn't make it. So I'm sure they'll be talking to me again.
Okay, is there any additional council reports?
Okay. I did not have any expedition this month. However, I did want to ask in, in light of the HOPSCAM on July fifth, there is also an economic development committee meeting. No, did they get canceled? Yeah, if you look on the calendars, it's. I will, I would take that one. Well, actually, yeah, you want to.
Um, that actually does July fifth meeting because of the conflict on the complicated schedule as they chose to move the meeting up to Wednesday, June twenty eighth.
If anybody would like to step up and take that expedition. They, they really didn't want to miss another meeting. They missed two or three or four already this year. They, they're pretty gun hope. So, um, I know it's going to shorten us on that expedition, but uh, if anybody wants, then you don't have to tell, you can email me tomorrow or.
I would probably do that. I think my spat of all is starting this week. So I'll be, I'll be off.
For what? Three years?
No, I have, uh, I think it's bad about that. I'm looking for it in the shoot marks between, I'm kind of unplugging mainly. But my wife's a hobby, so I'm still on the downside. So I'll probably get it.
Do you want to confirm with me like in the next two days?
I will ask my wife to manage it. She'll be patient.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, what's interesting is the comment. Yeah, what's interesting is the comment, uh, it was made by Counselor Page about scouts, when my two boys were in scouts here, when there was not even, probably eleven hundred people. They, they had a pack of fifty-five. I don't know how we can't get that thirty-four hundred people. But times have changed. There's no doubt about that.
It's too bad, cause they had a group that did a lot of things around town that really
Yeah.
did a lot of outside projects and got involved with stuff, so.
Yeah.
My wife and I made a concerted effort to get that back. So during the, um, um, God Festival Parade, we're gonna have some boy scout and cub scouts uh, in that, handed out equipment flyers and such, to try to get that, you know, it's, it's good, it's, uh, it's a way for, uh, kids to get together and, you know, be the comparison bigger, so it, it's fine. I'm, I'm enjoying that.
Okay, I've got a couple of reports. I attended on the seventh of June. Uh, instead of, uh, Councilor Martinez, the Economic Development Committee, and during that meeting, uh, there was a pretty good, uh, Q and A, uh, regards, in regards to business grant uh, applicant for Capio, and I know that they made a recommendation that, uh, that Capio be, um, approved as, uh, as a business eligible for that grant. And, uh, that is basic, uh, basically growth inner, uh, I think it's either growth expect, is it expectations or something of that nature?
Uh, you said it exactly correctly, growth expectation, LLC.
Okay, very good. And then, uh, and that ensued for a while, but, uh, they also had some discussion about the code on commercial parking requirements in the commercial districts. And that's something that's, uh, probably gonna cross over into planning commission, because it's obviously, uh, in the realm of planning, and, uh, so that would be referred at some point. But they listed this, some concerns about, um, the folks who are trying to do something where the previous rusty piston is, and what, whatever those parking requirements were, and I'm not sure what they are. They're probably not in alignment with a C one, but I, I don't recall the conversation now. I probably should, but, uh, that is an item for discussion. There was some other, uh, banter about some other things. But typically, that pretty much, uh, encompassed that. And then on the ninth of June, uh, Friday afternoon, I attended the, uh, Metropolitan Communications Board Director's meeting. And, uh, at that meeting, uh, we elected officers, so basically, uh, recently to be officers that are currently holding positions. We had a MAC report, so the director of MAC, uh, provided a report. And then the presentation of the budget for the Metropolitan Communications. And that budget was approved by the body, uh, ten point three million. And that includes the, uh, P E G and P C N grants, P E grants, they call them, in the amount of one point nine million. Uh, North Plains was the recipient of, uh, grant in the amount, uh, two grants totaling eighty-nine hundred and twelve dollars. And, uh, which is a very small percentage of the grant program. The larger grant that, that was requested was denied because it didn't have to do with program. But I think there's some ways, and I discussed with Robin, uh, maybe we can approach it, uh, in a different tack to secure more funds from the, in the future going forward. The, uh, uh, we held an executive session, uh, and we approved, uh, a, basically a COLA, uh, in the amount of five point six percent. Um, we did also, uh, discuss, we discussed the, what was gonna be sent out and, uh, about four point eight million was sent out to the jurisdictions, where one of those jurisdictions, I'm not sure I have that exact amount, but I'm, I'm sure, uh, we can find it if we need to. And, uh, they're operating with a staff of twelve point five F T D, and their, uh, payroll costs are one point nine billion. That encompasses all of the, of their compensation. So that was the MAC, uh, board meeting, and, uh, that's all I have. If there's nothing further, I think we need to discuss the council calendar. Uh, am I right? Council calendar, any conflicts on the calendar? Uh, it's way down there. Okay, I would say, is there, if anybody have any conflicts? Uh, we obviously solved the, uh, Counselor Payton conflict by not having a meeting that night. Okay.
I vote not to the video.
What was that?
Is, uh, is it up to the mayor to change life in the meeting? Cause that's gonna be pretty busy with, uh, all this stuff.
Seven, three, that would be seven, three?
Yeah, my name, July third. Scheduled council.
Yeah, I mean. I don't know what are, what, you know, I would defer to what, what you think we need to make in progress, and whether we can miss a meeting or not. If we can't, I, I would say we just, uh, you know, we basically dispatch that meeting and go to the next one.
Yeah, uh, we don't have any present business that can't wait until the second of July.
Well, I don't know that we need a vote any day. Just the consensus seems to be, could forego.
If you were in Cornelius, you only can do one meeting per month.
Right, right.
You're, you're doubling your hot book.
Yeah. We know you work is pretty hard, so, you know, we'll take the break.
Now, we, we can definitely, uh, make that, uh, make that work from the schedule.
Okay, excellent. I know we've, we've been, you know, we, we have been pretty progressive in terms of tackling things, and and I think it's good, but, uh, I also.
It's summer in Oregon.
Yeah, exactly. Let's, let's take it. And with that, uh, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn at eight thirty seven.